Good evening, and time is 7:01. Today is Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. My name is Fred Chase, and I will call to order this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. If the council members would please, please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would remind everyone that tonight's meeting is being aired live and recorded for future broadcast. The council has been made aware of the passing of several veterans of military service, residents in the town, and I would like to identify those individuals and, in a moment, just ask you for a moment of silence. We're informed that Mr. William C. Boyce had passed on January 27th of this year, and he had served in the Vietnam War. He was a, he served in the United States Army, 8th U.S. Army Europe, and his passing was on January 27th. In addition, on February 24th, 2023, we're informed that Mr. John M. Perry had passed, and Mr. Perry served in the United States Army during the Vietnam War. On the 28th of February of this year, Mr. Harold W. Nelson had passed, and he was a member of the United States Marine Corps during the Korean War. And sadly, we have one additional member to make note. We note the passing of Mr. Edward J. Hinco, who had passed on the 15th of March of this year. Mr. Hinco served in the United States Army, 8th Army European Theater of Operations during the Vietnam War. And I would ask if you would kindly join me in a moment of silence to commemorate the passing of these individuals. I thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from a previous meeting, and these are the minutes of the March 7th, 23, 2023 meeting. And I would, I would note for the councilors that, subject to your approval, I have noted that the councilors named as present in the meeting did not include Counselor McKinnon. However, later in the votes that were recorded, his vote is duly represented. So it's, it's really, I think, a very minor issue. Subject to your agreement, I think if we can move to approve the minutes, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion? I see none. If we could have, please, a roll call vote?
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry? Oh, he's not here yet. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Abstained. I wasn't here.
Seven in favor, one abstained.
I thank you. We have no announcements or proclamations this evening. We can move directly to citizens' open forum. And if there are citizens who would care to address the council, I invite you to step forward to the podium and do so. Please identify yourself by name and your street. And if you would kindly limit your remarks to no more than three minutes, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, Merrily Kenny Hunt. I'm, I'm here as the Chair of the Townhouse Restoration Committee to ask you, please, to vote in favor of the article that will come before you tonight for funding the casts of the Parthenon freezes. That is, we're asking for CPA money. So it's the town asking for CPA money, and the town asking the town council to approve the town getting money for the freezes. Does that make sense? It isn't going to some outside organization or anything like that. And there might have been something confusing in what I wrote earlier that I had hoped that we could perhaps get a cultural council grant for $4,000 for the transportation, but all the cultural council money had already been allocated and approved by the time we learned about it and, and tried to make that, that happen. So that $4,000 is not an extra $4,000. That was part of the original $18,000. And we did not get that grant. So it is the $18,000 that's being asked for. Is that sufficiently confusing? Okay, I'll sit down then.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunt. Other citizens who care to address the council?
Sam Baumgartner, Short Street. Good evening, councilors, and Mr. Dutton and Attorney Rollins. First, I want to give a shout out, a thanks to both Counselor President Chase and Town Manager Dutton for their comprehensive and informative presentations last night detailing the state of the town. It was uplifting to hear about the many projects completed in 2022, along with those that are underway, and to remember and pay tribute to the hard work put in by town employees. A moment of reflection like that motivates us all to keep plugging away and plunge into problems or issues that still need solution as we move into the next year, 2023. As part of his opening remarks, President Chase made clear and affirming statements regarding the town's support of Pride Month, the Juneteenth holiday and celebration, and Indigenous Peoples' Day, thereby confirming its commitment to the LGBTQ+ community, to people of color, to Indigenous people, and in general, to being a diverse, welcoming community. Further, Mr. Chase stated that Bridgewater will be a place where hate will not be tolerated. Members of Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights, and I hope all town citizens, are sincerely thankful, Mr. Chase, for such a forthright public statement. Perhaps your comments were the answer to the question we came to raise tonight. On February 28th, the Executive Board of BCCR sent a letter by email to town officials with a request to take a stand against all forms of hate. This request came because of declarations from neo-Nazi hate groups, particularly against Jews, which resulted in a high level of alert in Jewish communities nationwide. BCCR conducted a standout on March 11th to speak out against anti-Semitism and all forms of hate. This was our second such standout in the past month. Since that standout, we have become aware of the following statistics. As reported by the Anti-Defamation League, there was a 38% increase nationwide and 72% increase in Massachusetts of hate speech and white supremacist propaganda in 2022. Massachusetts ranks second in the U.S., behind Texas, in the tally of such occurrences. To date, or at least until Mr. Chase's comments last night, BCCR has not heard from any town officials in response to our email, nor have we seen any public statements. Therefore, we ask the council to consider adopting or creating its own version of Mr. Chase's statement and publicizing such a statement widely via the town website and Facebook pages, the Bridgewater Residence page, and via internal communications to all town employees. Such public statements are critical in fighting back against the hate groups. I close my comments with the well-known compilation of statements from Martin Niemöller, a German theologian, which was included in our email. Niemöller was originally a Nazi supporter until the Nazis came for him. He came to believe that Germans were complicit in the Nazi atrocities by remaining silent until it was too late. First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. So please follow Mr. Chase's lead, join us in speaking up and taking a public stand against hate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Are there other citizens who care to step forward? Yes.
Hi, Rebecca Fleisch-Cudero, Deerfield Drive. Thank you again, as I always say, for allowing us to speak at these meetings. I also wanted to thank you, Council, Council President Chase and Vice President Moore, for your continued support of the pride flag raising in 2023. This support and these ceremonies helped to convey a message as expressed in the council's 2016 proclamation that Bridgewater is a place where intolerant speech and behavior are unacceptable. Thank you, Counselor Chase, for expressing these same sentiments, as Mr. Baumgartner just said, at the State of the Town meeting. I'd like to comment further on Mr. Baumgartner's statement encouraging the town council and town government to publicly speak out, and I would ask, stand out. In thinking about what I would say tonight, I began, as many of us do, Googling. I came across a reference to the, quote, "detached observer," to how silence is approval, something we all learned during the Training for Active Bystanders that BCCR member Beryl Domingo initiated, a training I know the town participated in. Further Googling uncovered a poem published as part of Walt Whitman's Leaves of Grass in 1860, and I ask that our town, our town government, our town council, our town citizens not be the silent detached observer in this short poem. With apologies for the now inappropriate use of the word negro, I'll share this poem. "I sit and look out," Walt Whitman. "I sit and look out upon all the sorrows of the world and upon all oppression and shame. I hear secret convulsive sobs from young men at anguish with themselves, remorseful after deeds done. I see in low life the mother misused by her children, dying, neglected, gaunt, desperate. I see the wife misused by her husband. I see the treacherous seducer of young women. I mark the ranklings of jealousy and unrequited love attempted to be hid. I see these sights on the earth. I see the workings of battle, pestilence, tyranny. I see martyrs and prisoners. I observe a famine at sea. I observe the sailors casting lots. Who shall be killed to preserve the lives of the rest? I observe the slights and degradations cast by arrogant persons upon laborers, the poor, and upon Negroes and the like. All these, all the meanness and agony without end, I sit looking out upon. I see, hear, and am silent." Thank you.
Thank you. Other citizens who care to step forward?
Thank you, President Chase. I also want to thank you for allowing me to come tonight for the purpose of passing out to the council, to the town manager and legal counsel copies of the town of Pembroke's electrical aggregation plan. The purpose of my doing this is, at the last meeting, we kind of talked about this plan, and as usual, there are many important questions that need to be investigated and checked out before any town would go forward with this.
Excuse me, if I may, I'm sorry, Mr. Stone, to interrupt you. If you could just, once again, identify yourself this time and, and your street.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry.
We remember you from the last meeting.
Yes. I'm sorry. I was so anxious to get going on this.
I understand.
My name is Lou Stone. I live in High Pond Estates, off of Plymouth Street.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. This plan has, is sponsored by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And of all the cities and towns in the Commonwealth, over one-half of them have already joined in a plan. Now, the purpose of my bringing this, as I said, I believe it outlines exactly how this plan is going to work, and I think it will answer a lot of the council's questions. And I know the town manager would like to look at it and legal counsel as well. So I have copies for everyone. Chairman of the Energy Committee also has a copy. Just as a quick example, I can tell you, a friend of mine lives in Plymouth, and he lives in a condo, and it's all electric. He, the whole works. His first month after being on Plymouth's plan, he saved over $300 over the previous month when he was getting his electricity from either, EverSource, I'm sorry. That's who he was getting it from. Now, just to take a look at Bridgewater, where I am, I have checked out my electric bill. If I had the same price that the people in Pembroke has, and I don't have an all-electric home, it would be about $75 a month that I could save. And you don't have to own your own home, because everybody that rents or owns, they all get an electric bill. So this is a great plan, but I know it needs a lot of investigation. I was involved with the Pembroke decision when I was on the Board of Selectmen. So thank you again for allowing me to come and to bring these reports. And if you'd tell me where I'd leave them, I'd be happy to do so.
You could, with the town manager? That's great. Thank you very much, Mr. Stone. Are there other citizens who care to step forward? Anyone else for citizen open forum? I see none. We can move on. There are no appointments to be considered this evening, nor do we have hearings scheduled. We have two license transactions, which will each require a public hearing. And I note the time is 7:18, and I will open the public hearing on the matter of Petition P. 2023-025, the granting of a common Vittler license to the Boundless Bean LLC. And I would first ask if there are any general questions from members of the public with respect to the proposed license for this establishment? Any questions at all, general questions from the public? I see none. Is there any member of the public here to speak in favor of this proposal? Yes, you may step forward if you'd like, and identify yourself if you would.
And I am from Bridgewater, Northfield Drive. The Boundless Bean is a coffee shop that will be employing individuals with disabilities. So boundless refers to the potential of individuals with disabilities. Our purpose is to provide meaningful, motivating, and fun job opportunities to people with exceptional abilities. We'll be utilizing a team approach, so support is built in as needed. We'll have one team in the front, one team in the back. Numbers will vary based on shift, but a minimum of one quarter of the roles will be flexibly designed for individuals with disabilities. It's a small shop over on 10 Summer Street, so jobs are limited. But with catering, online sales, and creation of merchandise, we'll be able to create more job opportunities as well.
Very good. I thank you very much. If, are there any other members of the public here to speak in favor of the proposal? I see none. Are there any members of the public here to speak in opposition to this license? Any members here to speak in opposition? I see none. And I would ask if there are any questions from members of the council? Yes, Councilor Moore?
Not a question, just a comment. I think it sounds like an amazing business, and I encourage my fellow councilors to support it.
Very good. I thank you, council. Any other, yes, Councilor Robinson?
I'd love to hear a little bit of background of, of what inspired this business, and have you operated a business like this in the past?
Yeah, I'm an occupational therapist.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
You have an audience of thousands online.
I looked over there, I saw myself.
Yeah, I think it was 150,000, as Michael said the other night.
No, I am an occupational therapist by profession. This will not be a therapeutic business, but adaptations and accommodations is what I am good at and what I am passionate about, and this is something that has been in the works for the last 15 years, I would say. As far as the food business goes, that I have been, so I'm an occupational therapist by profession, but I do have about six years of experience in the food business, and I had a home bakery, a licensed home bakery, for two years.
Awesome. As a supporter of small businesses, as somebody who has definitely been in the advocacy space for diversity, equity, and inclusion, I commend you, and I will support this. Thank you so much for bringing this to our town.
Thank you very much. Counselor Lindy?
Not a question, but I think it's wonderful what you're trying to do, and I'll be fully supportive of it.
Thank you so much.
Very good.
And I would like to make the motion to grant Petition P. 2023-025 and grant a common Vittler license to the Boundless Bean LLC.
There's a motion for approval and a second. Thank you very much, councilors. Any further discussion? Counselor Wood?
I'll just say, I think it's a great idea. A lot of great opportunities. That building in particular struggles with parking, as you know. It's an, it's an obvious opportunity, as we talk about downtown revitalization, to think of a business like this and the struggles that it goes through, and look for opportunities, like in a larger parking lot and other places, that we can get additional spaces to support your business.
Happy, fantastic.
Thank you, councilor. Thank you very much. And I, is there any further discussion from the council? I see none. If we could have a roll call vote, please? I'm sorry?
Vote to close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. It is 7:22, and we will close the public hearing. Thank you very much. And if we could have a roll call vote?
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Moving on. We have another public hearing, I believe. Time is 7:23. I will open the public hearing on the matter of Petition P. 2023-026, granting of the transfer of a common Vittler license, sub shop, Bridgewater DBA Subway. And I have opened the public hearing on this matter, and I would ask firstly if there are any general questions from members of the public with respect to this licensing matter? Any general questions from the public? Is there any member of the public here to speak in favor of this proposed license? License transfer, I should say. I see no one. Is any member of the public here to speak in opposition to this license transfer matter? I see none. And are there questions from the council members? Counselor Perry?
Thank you. I have been to the subway in recent weeks and met the new owners that are running it now, and they're doing a fine job taking over from the prior owner, so I would support this wholeheartedly.
I thank you very much. Yes, Counselor George?
I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to the petition in the first paragraph. Whereas, we change 16 Central Square to 233 Broad Street.
Second on that.
Very good. So we will ask for a vote to amend the petition accordingly. Any further discussion?
I was just gonna say thank you, because I was very confused by the address.
I was excited until I got corrected.
If, if we could kindly have a roll call vote on the matter of the amendment of the petition?
Sure. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And to the matter of the actual approval of the transfer itself, are there any further questions from members of the council? No questions or comments? I thank you. Then if we could have a, I will close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
It is, it is 7:25.
A second.
We have a motion for approval and a second. Thank you. Any further discussion? I see none. And if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. We have no presentations scheduled this evening. We could move directly to the town manager's report. And I would ask Mr. Dutton if you would kindly inform us as to the status of the fire station.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. President, a very short report tonight. The fire station, work continues, planning work continues, design work continues on that. The designers and the engineers have taken in all of the input from firefighters themselves. And, and I can tell you that we have commissioned, or did commission, an updated cost estimate. That estimate came in substantially higher than our estimates in 2021. We are not particularly worried at this point, given the volatility of the, of the building market, but we will continue to aggressively pursue grant funding, which we were doing anyway, and also through the design process, look at savings opportunities in the construction of that building. So that's, that's all I have on the fire station, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at all for the town manager? And I see none. I thank you.
So on the, on the High Street closure update, we had a little unplanned test of that today when High Street had to be shut down for utility work. I think specifically it was natural gas line relocations and, and also electric line relocations. So that was shut down for a good portion of today. The timeline for the more long-term closure is still June 15th, and with a reopening around October 15th, and in that time, they will remove the dam, replace the box culverts, the dry-laid box culverts with a clear-span bridge. We have finalized a notification plan as well as a detour plan that will certainly be inconvenient for some, but we are hoping to spare Oak Street in particular from heavy use. As you know, the Oak Street Bridge is a one, down to one lane at this, at this point, which is another grant possibility that we're looking at to repair that bridge. But, but during the closure from June 15th to October 15th, we're looking to spare Oak Street from any heavy use and traffic, so, so that is in the works. And that's really what I have on High Street, but again, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other questions for the town manager? I see none. I thank you very much, Mr. Dutton.
Thank you.
Committee reports, there is one committee report that I will announce, and it's actually in connection with the first item of legislation for action, which is coming up now. So I'll actually just begin to discuss that matter. The legislation is Order FY23-049, Release of Trustee and Acceptance of Funds, Release of All Restrictions and Covenants, and Declaration of Restrictions for 1185 Pleasant Street. And I think as, certainly the councilors and I think many members of the public realize, this is with respect to the site location selected for construction of the new Bridgewater Fire Department Headquarters Building and the addition of a passive recreation trail. The committee report, the, this order had been referred to the Rules and Procedures Committee. We met last week in connection with this, and we had determined to return this item to the council without recommendation. And I quickly want to point out that in no way should an inference be drawn that we were in opposition to it. Certainly speaking for myself, quite the contrary, I'm very supportive of it. But we actually felt that the order itself was not within the purview of the Rules and Procedures Committee, and we had a rather lengthy discussion about that fact. So it is returned from the Rules and Procedures Committee without any recommendation. I do believe that the, the Budget and Finance Committee had met with this. Can you inform us, Counselor?
Yes, Mr. President. We met prior to the council meeting and voted unanimously 3 to 0 to recommend to the full council.
I thank you. And I also note that the Finance Committee had met previously on the 13th of March and had and had voted seven to zero to recommend approval. In light of all that, I would ask for a motion for approval for this measure.
So moved.
We have motion and a second. Thank you. Is there further discussion? And I see none. If we could kindly have a roll call vote?
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to order FY 23-050, capital plan leasing obligation. And if I could please refer to Mr. Dutton for comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the first of likely two capital orders that you will receive over the next several months. This pays for obligations regarding our lease purchase agreements. We generally, vehicles, we generally do on a lease purchase plan because it benefits the town financially. And I can, for the benefit of the public and the council, I'll just run, very quickly run through the obligations here. Generally, they're five-year commitments, the fire engine E4, fire radio equipment lease, police body worn camera system, the DPW freight liner, actually three DPW freight liners. One is the fifth of five years, the other two are the second payment of five years. And then finally, the obligation that we have for the buyout of the old high school, currently Bridgewater Middle School, for $70,000. That's the fourth payment of 12. And the total on that capital obligation is $512,496.95.
I thank you. I would note that the Finance Committee had met on March 13th and voted approval of this measure by a seven to nothing vote. And if I could, Counselor Gallagher, was this discussed this evening?
Yes, Mr. President. We voted unanimously three to zero to recommend.
In the Budget and Finance Committee?
Yes.
Three to zero. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Wood?
So there's another order which, or measure which I won't discuss, but this is a, for people looking at the budget process, this is an excellent example of what we've done the past decade or so for the budget process. So years ago, we set up a free cash policy. We have a budget process that generally generates free cash. Free cash is then moved into capital stabilization and several other accounts. And now we have a placeholder for, you know, reserves. And now we have a process by which we take the reserves that we've built up over time and we apply them to public safety, and you can see all the other pieces that we go to. So for other towns, they may have to find debt exclusions or coming out of operational funds or trying to set aside money on a spur or maybe using some free cash. But the town of Bridgewater has a budget policy that starts with the upcoming budget season that we have and goes all the way around the year. And this one item is probably the best example of seeing the full closure of that circle. And if anybody has any questions, they can reach out to me. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That's very informative, counselor. Thank you. Other comments or questions from the councilors? And seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please?
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
I thank you. We can move on to order FY 23-051, transfer order, restoration of Parthenon frieze. And we did have, we did introduce this matter at our last session, and I think it was actually a very observant comment that was made after the meeting by Mr. Gallagher. I think he felt that we didn't really very fully explain the nature of this proposal. But I thought I might read just a few very brief comments from the request letter that was submitted to us from the Historic District Commission in support of this measure. And it is written, "As Chair of the Bridgewater Historic District Commission, I am ready to support the recent CPC application by the Townhouse Restoration Committee, which requests funding to restore six Parthenon frieze replicas that are owned by the town. The history of these friezes is significant for the citizens of Bridgewater. These friezes were donated to the town by the McElwain family in the early 20th century, and since 1912, they were displayed in the McElwain School, which was attended by many citizens of Bridgewater. The town assumed ownership of the friezes when the school was closed in the 1980s, and they have remained in storage since. The Townhouse Restoration Committee, along with the town manager, rightly wants to restore these friezes and display them in the Academy Building for the citizens of Bridgewater and visitors to enjoy. Fortunately, the Townhouse Restoration Committee researched the history of these friezes and determined that the Caproni Collections in Woburn, which cast the original friezes, is still in business and will be able to restore these six friezes authentically, one of which has been badly broken. Now is the time to restore these important friezes before more damage is done. It is my understanding that these friezes are exact replicas made from the original friezes in the British Museum known as the Elgin Marbles, which were brought from Athens to London in the early 1800s by Lord Elgin and housed in the British Museum. So it really is a very intriguing story, and I think it's a very unique asset that the town has. And I think that, in my own opinion, that preservation and display of these marbles, replicas of them, would be highly desirable. With that said, I will note that the Finance Committee had voted five to one to approve this measure. And the Budget and Finance Committee, I believe, tonight had a discussion about it. Is that right, counselor?
Yes, and we voted three to zero to recommend.
You did. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that update. And I would entertain a motion for approval.
Actually, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. President, but thank you. Sorry, what fund is this coming out of?
CPC.
The CP?
The Community Preservation Committee.
Ah, gotcha. Okay.
That's right.
I thought that's what was mentioned. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion? Thank you. And I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. And we can move on to new business, the first of which is, oh, I'm sorry. We still have one. I know of old business. Petition 2023-024, town election warrant for the town election to take place on April 22nd, 2023. And this item had not been referred to any committee, but 14 days having elapsed, it therefore may be finally considered this evening. I would entertain a motion for-
Motion to approve?
Second.
Wait, motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Wood?
Through you to our town attorney? Probably the last time I can ever ask this question. What would happen if the town council decided to not approve this measure?
There would be a lawsuit that would involve many towns-
Oh, your mic front off.
It would be a lawsuit whereby I would end up having to represent the town and sue the town council to put forward their own ballot or warrant. So not an ideal situation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Things are just not going to be the same. Thank you very much. Where are we? If we have a motion for approval, and if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business. The first item is petition P 2023-027, a resolution in recognition of Gay Pride Month. And I'm pleased to bring this forward together with Counselor Eric Moore as co-sponsor. And I'd like to read the resolution into the record and for the benefit of the public this evening. Whereas since 2016, the town of Bridgewater and the Members of the Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights have worked together to create a welcoming community supportive of equality based on a tradition of equal rights and equal protection for all. And whereas in 2021 and 2022, the elected leaders of the town of Bridgewater demonstrated their support of an often marginalized and persecuted community, the LGBTQ+ community, by issuing resolutions declaring Bridgewater to be a safe haven where all people, regardless of their religion, ethnicity, sexual orientation, or gender identity, can live in peace, free from hatred and violence. And whereas furthermore, in 2021 and 2022, the town council members demonstrated their leadership in supporting the raising of the pride flag in front of the Academy Building, the seat of town government. Many people attended the flag raisings in celebration and support of family, friends, and community. And whereas while Bridgewater may proudly claim support for members of the LGBTQ+ community, we are witnessing hostile acts by some states restricting the rights of transgender children to participate in education, sports, and needed medical care. Whereas we are witnessing the increased deadly violence against members of the LGBTQ+ community throughout the country. And whereas our friends, family, members, and neighbors remain vulnerable to the increased level of hatred rhetoric directed at minority communities across the country. And whereas our friends, family, members, and neighbors remain vulnerable to the, I think that's a repetition. Be it further resolved that the Bridgewater Town Council once again fully supports the gay pride flag to be flown with the United States flag in front of the Academy Building in the town of Bridgewater from June 1st through June 14th, 2023. I would ask for a motion that we keep this item at the council level and consider it finally at our next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a-
Motion to approve.
And a second. Thank you. Discussion? No discussion? Very good. I thank you. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. And we can move on to Resolution FY 23-006, Annual July 4th Community Celebration.
Ditto.
And I would like to ask the sponsor, Dr. Kevin Perry, if you would like to introduce the matter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this resolution is being brought forward to the council in support of the Fourth of July Committee and their fundraising efforts. And being a prior president of this committee, I thought it would be appropriate that I put my name on this. So to read the resolution to the record, this is for Annual Fourth of July Community Celebration. Whereas the Annual Fourth of July Community Celebration is a cherished tradition in Bridgewater that brings together residents and visitors alike. And whereas the celebration is fully funded by private donations from community members and businesses, and the success of the event depends on the generosity of these donors. And whereas a fundraising thermometer on the Academy Building grounds would provide a visual reminder of the progress toward the fundraising goal and encourage additional donations from community members and businesses. And whereas the Academy Building is a central invisible location in the town, now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby supports the placement of a fundraising thermometer on the Academy Building grounds for the purpose of displaying the progress toward the fundraising goal for the Fourth of July Committee Celebration. Further resolved that the fundraising thermometer will be installed in a manner that is respectful of the historic nature of the Academy Building and does not damage or deface the property. And further resolved that the fundraising thermometer will be maintained and removed promptly after reaching a fundraising goal of $40,000 for the community's Fourth of July celebration. So this obviously will just bring awareness to the amount that needs to be raised for this. And I would just make a motion that we keep this at the council level as well.
Thank you very much. And is a motion made to keep this at the council level for our next meeting consideration? Is there a second for that?
Second.
We have a second. Thank you very much. Any discussion at all? I would like to just note that I think it's an admirable effort. I think that it certainly is consistent with the needs that were identified to us at a recent meeting by Keith Buell. And I feel very confident that this would be helpful toward achieving the goal. We know how much we appreciate and value that Fourth of July celebration, and I think that, I think this is a wonderful gesture. Thank you very much. Yes, more counsel?
Sorry, I'm always on your left side here when you're turned. So this one's a tricky one, interestingly enough, because of the precedent that the town has set in terms of not promoting, you know, all cultural celebrations, et cetera, et cetera. You know, as somebody who has, as an individual, I have donated to this event. My family loves it. But is there any concern about precedent?
The only thing I would say is, you know, Fourth of July especially is more of a national and government-based type of event. So I think that the linking of our town council to this event as a town-wide celebration would be appropriate and not be in conflict with any other types of events that happen in town.
And is the thinking to have it in front of the Academy Building because of just the foot traffic versus it could easily go on the green?
Well, I think it's the visibility as you come around. I think it's a safer look as you come around the common to see it right there on the front lawn there of the Academy Building. And again, bring more awareness so let people know where they stand as far as the fundraising goes. And hopefully, if they don't see that number climbing, it helps them to be aware and maybe make more donations.
Any other thoughts, opinions around precedent from my fellow councilors?
I don't think this is setting a precedent. I think it's worthy, definitely worthy. I know that there are issues when people put things in front of the Academy Building because it's supposed to go, sometimes supposed to go through maybe the Historic District Committee or whatever. I don't know. There's protocol, I think. But I'm not opposed to this at all.
I'm personally inclined to think that, you know, since it is a temporary item and it's certainly, I think, very likely to induce added contributions to the campaign. I think it's, and I think as Counselor Perry duly noted, that it's in accord with a widely-held and patriotic celebration nationally. So I think that, all things considered, it seems to me appropriate for us to consider it.
So, yeah, I mean, like I said, I think it's something that's just, that is, you know, I just asked the question as a thought starter, you know? So for instance, if we thought about Juneteenth, if there was a fundraiser across town for something like that, would we ever consider putting a thermometer, you know, a fundraising thermometer for that? Or if it was Diwali and there was, you know, say there was a big celebration? That's all I'm saying, is that, you know, as you think about other cultural celebrations, you know, just being open to that. And again, I understand that it's temporary. I absolutely understand how a fundraising thermometer works. So like I said, the specific ask here was just about the precedent, just knowing that we are setting one in this instance.
I think, thank you, counselor. Any further comments or discussions?
If I could, I mean, I like the idea of us trying to recognize more of the celebrations that are celebrated within our community. So I think some of those examples, you know, might be good to see. I also support Fourth of July, and I agree, fundraising is always a challenge. I think the team works tirelessly, literally walking the streets to try to find money. And so I think, you know, this, like the other celebrations in town is a great one for us to get behind.
If there's no further discussion, I will ask please for a roll call vote.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
And that's just to keep it at the council.
That's correct. Yes, at the council level. Correct. Thank you. And that is nearing the end of our agenda this evening, but we have another period of citizen comments, and I would invite any citizen who cares to address the council to kindly step forward, identify yourself, and limit your remarks to no more than three minutes. Yes, Dr. Hunt?
Thank you very much, Carlton Hunt. I just wanted to thank you for voting on the friezes as one who has handled them personally within the last six weeks, and their need for restoration is very- is very obvious. And I'm extremely excited that they could go in this building and actually set it off. That's one. Two, I appreciate the comments on the energy aggregation. I have asked two or three of you to put an order together or consider putting an order before this council sooner rather than later. So I would encourage and hopefully see that on the agenda for next week for council consideration. Number three, I don't know if you've noticed, but the townhouse is getting a new haircut. I mean, the roof. They started and they stripped all of the shingles off. I understand that the sheathing that's there did not have to be replaced or anything, so they can move forward on that. And I think as one who has actually looked at all the annual town meetings by word searching, the now-scanned documents for the town annual report, there's a lot of good things about that. One of those is to the conversation you just had. The town council and the town meeting many times had voted to support the Fourth of July celebrations, including a banner that flew across the common and other such things. So I would like to have you guys think about that a little bit more. I will also say, you absolutely have to go before the Historic District Commission for permission to put the sign in the district. That is a requirement as the district is set up. I'm sure that they will be appropriately appreciative of it, and I encourage it also. Also, I really going to add, because of the comments the council has made, I think we need to consider, or you all need to consider, writing a policy with respect to signs on the common, including the HDC requirements. Thank you again for your hard work today.
All right. Thank you very much. Other citizens for citizen comment? And I see none. We could move to counselor comments. And I'd like to begin, if I could please, with Counselor McKinnon?
Just want to wish everyone a happy spring, and I'll see you guys in two weeks. Sorry for the dud revving his head outside of my house.
I thank you, counsel. I hope you're feeling, feeling better soon. Counselor George?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Perry?
Trying to think if I had anything I wanted to say tonight. Again, I just, based on the resolution, I just want to recommend and tell everyone to please support the Fourth of July Committee and their efforts. And hopefully, if they reach their goal, we'll have a wonderful Fourth of July celebration later this year. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Moore?
Yeah, three quick things. So first, I wanted to thank you and the town manager again for a great State of the Town address last night. If people haven't gotten a chance to see that, I really encourage you to look at the video. I think if it hasn't already, it'll be posted online through BTV soon. It is a great way to get a snapshot of what's happening in the town and also what's planned for the town. And I think we had maybe 25 or so people there. Next year, I think, once people see this, my hope is that that's closer to 100 with people waiting to come in from outside, because it really is the best way to learn what's happening in the town so that you can be involved. But thanks again. That was great. I was also excited to see the freezes come through. I went to McHale Wayne. I think I remember the freezes, but reading about it, it reminds me that Bridgewater is filled with amazing history, not just for our town, but actually for our country. And I love these opportunities to sort of highlight that important part of our history. So I appreciate the work to do that. And then the last thing is, speaking of celebrations, the town council has been offered and has accepted a table at the Juneteenth Celebration. And so I will be there at the booth, and I know others might be planning to attend as well. So if you are planning to attend and are interested in spending some time at the table to meet residents, just let me know, and I can help coordinate. That's it.
Well, thank you, counselor. And Counselor Robinson?
Yeah, I have a few things echo the sentiments around this, this State of the Town address. And thank you, President Chase, for your, your great delivery. And thank you, Town Manager Dutton, as well, for the updates. It was, it was informative and I think really, really valuable for, for all of us to hear. Big congratulations to Boundless Bean and Subway. It's always great to see businesses coming here, starting or continuing, so nice to see that. The last thing that I wanted to comment on was thank you to BCCR and the other citizens here who continue to hold leaders in the community accountable or, you know, ask for our participation, whether it's, you know, the freezes to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I know everybody in this room knows that my background, you know, of getting involved in the town was being, has been, being a DEI advocate. So I have to say, as an advocate, as a woman of color, it's very encouraging to see other counselors being more vocal and, and supporting the fact that we are continuing to be more diverse. And when, and when there is more diversity, it actually invites more hate. That is statistically understood as well, is that hate groups increase, you know, as it corresponds to populations. So being able to reiterate that, you know, hate does not still belong here. Yes, there's freedom of speech, and we cannot stop the speech. But letting it be known that it's not invited is, is very important. So I appreciate any support and work that has come from, from this council. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Lindy?
I will echo the comments of the other counselors about the wonderful State of the Town speech last night by our council president and our town manager. And it's nice to see positive things happening. I love the plan that we are going to be the destination by a certain date. Makes me feel good.
2035.
2035. That's good. Congratulations again to Boundless Bean. It's nice to see a new business come in where an old business left. And last but not least, I stand with BCCR. I have always been asked and welcomed to go to any of the standouts, and I appreciate you guys for doing what you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to congratulate you on your town address last night. Wasn't quite as good as mine a few years ago, but.
Not a coincidence.
But it was very good. It was very good. And you, you hit, you hit on all the points. And the same goes to the town manager. I think that you had some captive ears there last night listening. And obviously, I, I think we will all be around in 2035 to see some of these things come, come to a conclusion. We might not all be on the council, but we all should still be, should be around, around the town. So it was a-
You'll probably still be on the council.
It was a good night. It was a, it was a, it was a very good night. And I will admit that I, I did not know what a freeze was when we had that brought before us last meeting. So am I signing again? Yes. So I went home and looked at, and I did ask, I won't name them, but I did ask a couple councils, and they didn't know what a freeze was either. So I went home and looked it up and, and figured it out. So I think that's a, it's a great use of the CPA funds to restore those pieces. I hope that history won't find that there's a subliminal message in those pieces somewhere, and we have to take them down. But I, I think it's a, it's a worth, it's a worthwhile project. And I also want to know that Counselor George and I, and I and Counselor Lindy are working to do a townwide cleanup on April 29th. I'm working with Wind Waste Management to, again, provide the dump truck or the dumpster and the supplies and all that. And, but we have set up a date of April 29th, and I have more to say about that on April 2nd. Also, to address the concerns that were raised in the opening comments tonight, I, I do think it's, it's, it's important to, to acknowledge the work that Dice is doing in this community and acknowledge that I do think this council, at least, has always been very supportive of the initiatives that they have brought forth to the council over the past few years. And I think it was, when I was council president, we had, I think, the first Juneteenth event. And then we had the first Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee was formed, and now we have that active in the community. But you are correct, there is no place for hate in this community, no matter what your background is. And I think all of us as counselors and town employees and residents do stand behind that. How we voice those concerns and how active we get in that, that's our, our choice. But I know I have been, I've supported many, many candidates throughout the district, throughout the state, and throughout the country that stand up against hate. And I'll continue to support them, continue to advocate that we should not allow extremism in this community, particularly what's happening throughout this country right now and throughout, and hopefully it calms down, because there's a lot of anxiety out there politically that's driven by certain forces. And I think we should do our own part as citizens, whether we're elected or not, to try to warn that off. But this is a town of no hate. We've demonstrated, we've shown that through supporting the initiatives through Juneteenth, Gay Pride Month, and other celebrations that we do have in this community. So I appreciate you bringing that up and, and calling us out on that, because we do need to stand up, and we do need to voice that concern all the time. And it may even be a good time to reread that proclamation that we, that we adopted maybe six, six years ago now, that, that formed the committee. It may be a good time to, to bring that to the council and read it again. I think I read it at least twice when, when I was president. So I appreciate that. And thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Wood?
Thank you. Just a couple of short comments tonight. We always laugh about when I ask the question to the town attorney about not voting for the town election. But I was part of a council that decided not to vote for an election, and it was chaos. And there were lawsuits that came out of it. And, and so I, I treat that lightly now, but it's a very serious thing. And so I always just bring it up as just a, just a reminder about the election. So, you know, there is one coming up on the, on the 22nd of April. And we, we haven't seen a lot of, really, a lot of groundswelling around the question. But the question is on the, the debt exclusion for the, for the old ride, debt exclusion for the BP Bristol Plymouth School. And so if you read the explanation on it, it's about $33 annually for the, the average property owner. So I, I raise this because, you know, I've done a lot of work with the high school. And if you, if you look at Facebook today, or, you know, in, in very recent history, you always see people saying, hey, I need a plumber. Can you recommend one? Hey, I need a carpenter. Can you recommend one? Well, where do, where do we think that these trade and skills come from? It comes from a school like BP, because BR really doesn't offer that type of vocation, and it comes out of BP. So as a community, I hope that we are going to support this, because as a community, we are, we are, you know, we are part of the BP community, and we will have to financially support it through the operation budget if we don't support this debt exclusion on April. So I hope people turn out and, and put a yes, a yes check mark next to that, that question. Which, in a related topic, I didn't get to help with TJ Robotics as much as I wanted to. TJ, they build a robot from scratch in the robot room in the high school. The school does support that, that vocation a lot. It does cover a lot of different disciplines, but it's not like what you see at BP. But I will tell you that the team has done great this year. They hosted a tournament and a competition, and they were, it's an alliance of three robots. They, they were in the winning alliance for that one. And this past weekend, they were up in Reading, and they, again, were in the winning alliance there. So they've got two winning banners. It's always a great, great group of kids and a great group of mentors. But it's not plumbing, and it's not carpentry. And so while we need to support BR Robotics, we also need to support BP and its efforts to put together a new school. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. I would just like to add that I think we've actually had some very good, very productive discussions this evening. We've acted on a number of important pieces of legislation. I thank you for your, for your input and for your cooperation in that regard. I thank you also for the very supportive comments you've made as to the State of the Town address last evening. It was, I think it was a well-attended event for an event that needed to be postponed because of the storm a week prior. And I had not had the opportunity during my years on the council to participate or even observe a State of the Town address in the past. We had a number of years during which we, you know, did not, and certainly in the pandemic, could not conduct that event. So I thought it was, I thought it was well-attended. I thought that the feedback we received from the members of the public was very supportive and very promising. I did note that, I think as many of you are aware, that President Fred, Fred Clark was in attendance from Bridgewater State University. And our, our state senator, Walter Timothy, Timmelti, Timmelti was in attendance, which was very encouraging. We thank him for his appearance there. And I think we touched upon a number of the important priorities and initiatives throughout the past year, and, you know, even some very more recent ones this year. And for all kinds of reasons, I just thought it was a very promising and forward-looking event. It, it called upon us to reacquaint ourselves with, with the vision that we have established of, the vision statement that just a little over a year ago, we, we supported here in the council. It called upon us to reacquaint ourselves with the scope and the importance of the Comprehensive Master Plan. And these are things that we are usually in the back of our minds somewhere, but I think it's important from time to time that we refocus on them and recommit ourselves to them. And I think that's really what many of the comments that, that I and the town manager made last night intended to do, to bring those to the fore, you know, as we look forward to what we hope to be a very, a very promising year of new developments here in the town. And I'm very encouraged by all of that. And I, I thank you all for your comments. I am pleased with the fact that we have moved forward with the resolution to, to celebrate Pride Month, and, and we soon will be doing, taking a similar action with respect to the Juneteenth Annual Celebration. And, you know, certainly my kudos to Dr. Perry for his introduction of the matter supporting our Fourth of July, the Fourth of July fundraising, raising efforts here in the town, which, as everyone knows, are not supported by town funds. It's entirely a private matter, and we rely so heavily upon the selflessness of those dedicated volunteers and the commitment of so many, many people and businesses in the town to contribute toward our Fourth of July celebration. And so there are many promising things that we've touched upon both last night and here in the council chamber tonight. And I thank you one and all for your continued support and participation. So with that, I think we've concluded, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Agreed.
Motion and a second. Thank you. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. We stand adjourned.